Good morning, everyone. Please rise for the question of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to prove the minutes for the November fourteenth, eighteenth, and December second.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Old Business, Veritas Group, recommendation letter for fueling station.
Yes, this has been considered and under advisement for the last couple of meetings. The bid is for the construction of the fueling station, one million nine hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars.
So I've requested some information over the past couple of meetings, and I've kind of looked at some numbers based on the information. So we have projected cost savings for the for the fuel station. We have numbers from two vendors that we've gotten since the last meeting that I've gotten. One vendor indicates, well, they gave us data from about twenty dates or so over the past year, savings on diesel, and then I asked them to also provide gas, regular gas, and got that in the past few days. So based on their information and the quote that we got in 2024, based on the number of gallons that were quoted, we would save approximately just under a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year, based on that vendor's numbers. So based on the projected cost of the fuel station and the design, it would take approximately nineteen years to pay that off. Then we have, we've got numbers from a second vendor, and the, there were budget numbers for Tank Wagon versus Tanker. And based on those numbers and the projected costs, it would take about forty-three years to pay off the fuel station. So, and these are all theoretical numbers. We don't have any hard bids. So to me, before we can make a firm decision on this, there's still, there's other questions about costs, but those are smaller issues. And in my opinion, you know, there's, there's been discussion about potentially some cost savings on the fuel station. But I would like to have a better idea rather than these theoretical savings. You know, I got other questions, like what, how much fuel are we actually using? I base these numbers on the quoted number of gallons, which is a hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty gallons of gas and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty gallons of diesel. I've got questions about what we're actually using, what we're actually paying, because I got some information from Debbie. And we do pay based on what the annual fuel bid was last year for some quantities. But then there's other quantities that we're paying, I guess, pump price. So I'm unclear on whether this is really going to, you know, provide any savings, which, you know, it ought to provide savings if we're going to go forward with this. And at this point, best I can tell is, based on the data we have, it's going to take somewhere between nineteen years and forty-three years to to pay it off. I'm not saying we should just scrap the whole thing, but I'm just saying that, in my opinion, we need some better data before we move forward with something like this.
I think what we had, the numbers that I had pulled up from from one of the companies, and I'd given those to you last last meeting, was just on the diesel. And then, like you said, they came back with the the gas numbers, too. And that's comparing the deliveries or the locked-in numbers to what you get when you buy it by the semi-load, just plain simple. I've got lots of experience of buying it by the transport load. On the farm, we saved a huge amount of money by doing that. But you get bids every time. I want everybody to understand that. We're not locking that into any one company. Every time we need fuel, there's at least three companies that we can call, two here in Boone County or outside the county. Any companies can be asked to bid on that, and it's whatever that price is that day for delivery, and that can vary. Sometimes maybe we'll lock in two loads at that point in time, because we have storage for two loads in each one of those those tanks. But it gives us more ability to move and watch the market. There's been plenty of times in the in the past twelve years that Jeff and I have locked that that price in for the whole year, and it was the best thing ever. And then there's times that we locked it in, and it was the worst thing ever, because the prices dropped after that. Or they went up, either way. You're playing with the market, not our expertise in figuring out what the market will do. So that's the whole thing with that. The other thing that I'm very concerned about is the bid that we have to build this facility is for now. We wait till after the first year. And my estimate on this, and like I said, I don't do this construction work by any means, but I think we'll be at two and a half million. And based off of what what we talked into one of these companies about how much the prices have increased on pumps just in the last year, gone from four hundred, two hundred dollars for a one-ten pump to over six hundred dollars for that same pump, just to put in a five-hundred gallon tank. And whatever price we've got locked in now is not going to hold after the first year. Those bids will go up.
I'll just say that I, Tim's comments are well taken. I think that there's some open interpretation for the number of years it'll take to pay back. I do think it'll pay itself back. But I don't, I don't think that's the only reason why you do something like this, is the fact that it'll pay itself off. There's other benefits to having this station there. Benefits to our record keeping, there's benefits to our convenience, to our employees. So I'm in favor of moving forward with it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only other comment I would make is, you know, there's going to be ongoing costs. They may not be very large, but they're not zero either, and that's not in this analysis either, so.
That is correct. There's maintenance costs on anything and everything you build. And our buildings are a great example of that, of how much we have to have to work on buildings every year, so. All right, well, the floor is open for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve this based on the one point nine four five.
Again, it's one million nine hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
And that's a not-to-exceed, and that we take advantage of the pricing we've got this year.
So a question on your motion is that, are we still moving forward with trying to find cost savings on the site?
Absolutely. Value engineering comes in as you as you design.
Good point. Glad you said that, yeah.
Absolutely. And hopefully, that'll that'll show. Tim's identified some things that I think are going to save us some money. So I think, I think that's a, that's a really good thing.
And in your motion, that is the max?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not to exceed the letter of recommendation.
Well, I'll second the motion, just so we vote on it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, new business. Material bids, phase two.
Yes, okay. The first bid is from Evergreen Roadworks LLC. This is for category five fog ceiling. Sorry, it was received December thirteenth at ten o'clock. Okay, they've got two different unit prices per square yard. One is AEF at a dollar thirty-five, and one is RBE dash R at two dollars and seventy cents. Next one is from Pavement Solutions. This is also for the category five fog ceiling. Received December thirteenth at eleven thirty. And they've got AEF at ninety cents per square yard. I think that's the only one they bid on. Yes, just the AEF at ninety cents per square yard. Next is from Pavement Solutions. This is for category eight micro-surfacing. Received December thirteenth at eleven thirty. Micro-surfacing, single, four dollars and ten cents per square yard, and micro-surfacing double, five dollars and forty-five cents per square yard. Next is category six crack ceiling. Pavement Solutions, Inc., December thirteenth at eleven thirty. Their bid for crack ceiling is three thousand dollars per ton. Next is category six crack ceiling, All-Star Paving, Inc., Received December thirteenth at twelve o'clock. Crack seal is nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars per ton. And the last one is category five fog ceiling. Received December thirteenth at twelve-ten. And they have active pave road guard at four dollars and fifty cents per square yard. Revolution Black Asphalt Rejuvenator, a dollar thirty per square yard. NAE at a dollar twenty-five a square yard. Revolution Clear Asphalt Rejuvenator, a dollar twenty-five per square yard. And NARO Road Renew, four dollars and fifty-six per square yard. After all the bids, recommend taking minor advisement for the highway department.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, next on our list is legal.
Just one thing. You had received a letter from Jennifer Lasley, the assessor's office, requesting that she be allowed to spend overnights for the annual conference, Indiana County Assessors Association Conference in Indianapolis. I believe the dates are the thirteenth through the sixteenth. I think you had approved that previously, but if you could just ratify that approval.
Moved to ratify.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
That's all I have for legal issues.
All right, next on the list is a gets agreement. Is Nikki in here?
One eighty in color.
Oh, sorry, I skipped. My mistake. Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Moving things along too fast, wasn't I?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jessica Schorson with the Boone EDC. I brought with me this morning five contracts for our one eighty in color. So this is the brother of the one eighty ready grant dollars. One eighty in color is for public artist murals. And here Lebanon Lido Building, Advance Town Hall, Thorntown Oddfellows, Whitestown Jackson Run Park, but that's going to be an artistic shade structure, and the Arc Sensory Garden. These all have to be completed with local government, because they are previous ARPA dollars. So we created a selection committee with stakeholders in each of the communities. Lebanon was main street organization, as well as Joe LaPage and our Historical Society for the Lido Building. And then based on the RFQ responses we received for each of these five projects, whoever scored the highest out of those artists who put in for it were the ones that were selected. So I'm happy to go through each of those. But I brought with me the draft of each contract with each artist for council review. And then once signed by you guys, I can get the artist under contract, so then we can go, we can start getting the process together for their artistic design, et cetera, and future public hearing approvals mainly. Also happy to send it electronically.
Good morning. I reviewed them previously. You can just get clean copies with the comments accepted.
Of course.
Redline. But yeah, I reviewed them previously. Recommend approval and adoption.
The first approval that you saw initially was just the template. I wanted to bring in with the contract dollars that were previously put out with the RFQs and artist names that were selected. So I will get the comments off of it, and then if there's any changes you'd like to make, we just need to have the artist under contract by February first, please.
Yes. Yeah, no, I'm fine with the terms of the contract there with Pamela Bliss, Anita Gordon, Lance Pruitt.
Anita Gordon is twice.
Yes, and then Brent Aldridge to Anita Gordon's.
Yeah. So Pamela Bliss, we have doing the Lido Building here in Lebanon. Anita Gordon, Advance Town Hall mural. Anita Gordon again for Thorntown Oddfellows Building mural. And Lance Pruitt, Jackson Run Park Shade Structure in Whitestown. Brent Aldridge, Team Arc Sensory Garden.
I'm good with it.
Do you want subject to?
No, I've already reviewed it before, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the next one. The gets agreement for print mail and lockbox services. No.
Okay. Yeah, this is just with the treasurer's office, their usual agreement for their lockbox email services for the tax bills and statements.
Need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next is Reynolds Farm Equipment Snow Plow Agreement. There's Max.
Yeah, so first one I have is a, just a new snow plow for a piece of equipment out the highway department. Total on that one's twelve thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. We're running a old bee plow on a tractor that's really not suited for that. So we've found something that is going to work out a lot better, make that job a lot easier.
All right.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next is from Westside Tractor.
The second one I have was with Westside Tractors for a new mini excavator. Total on this one is one ninety-two, two sixty-eight, forty-eight. It's a budget item for 2025. Again, we're getting ahead of price increases for the rest of the year, so just want to get that approved.
Questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Excuse me. Mr. Lamar, compensation study.
Good morning. Dan Lamar, Boone County Councilman and member of the Compensation Committee. The Compensation Committee met last year several times, working with documentation to make recommendations to the council from a study that was done by NFP. That study was done in 2022. And for the most part, it gave us a solid foundation to make recommendations to the council with educated information. Now, that that study was done with peer counties of our size, and they gave us a mid-range, high-range, low-range recommendation for the different offices, appointments, elected officials, and their staffs. So we did have nineteen, that we didn't have sufficient information to give the, or nineteen positions where we didn't have sufficient information to give the council, and where in which they were willing to follow our advice. Therefore, our ask is that you sign a contract with NFP so that we can have a solid foundation for our positions. Megan does have money available in her in her budget for 2024. And if we, if you were to sign a contract, she would need to send seven thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is one-half of what the study would cost. And there, and I believe we would have a more solid foundation to work with the council.
Any questions?
I guess I don't really have any questions in particular, but... I mean, I have a comment. I guess I don't, we've done a compensation study, extensive compensation study that cost ninety thousand dollars in 22. We did an update earlier this year. I don't even know if it was an update, but a presentation to council for an additional twelve hundred dollars. So I guess I don't, I don't really understand why we feel like we need to continue to spend money on compensation when we seem to have the information that we need to make those decisions.
I think the point is we didn't have all the information that we needed, and thank you for your point. I appreciate that, but it's very important, as Boone County is in this growth mode, that we maintain high-quality personnel. And we want to make sure we're at least in the low-range or the mid-range.
Yeah, I agree. I've seen the study. I've reviewed the study. I just respectfully disagree. I think we've got all the information we need to make the decisions that need to be made.
Thank you for your point.
I don't really have any comments, other than, you know, I've talked to the Compensation Committee, and this is something they feel like they need. They've made a recommendation, and I appreciate that. I just would encourage, like I have every time we've done a compensation study in Boone County, I encourage that we actually implement the results of that. That's not always been the case, so I'm just encouraging that, you know, if we do put the time and the effort and the money into doing this, that we implement the results of that effectively. So I would make a motion that we approve the request.
I'll second it, just so we vote on it.
Any, any comments from legal counsel on this at all?
No, sir.
They didn't figure their way, but always best to ask.
I appreciate that.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dan. All right, next is Resolution 2024 dash zero six, approval of the tri-party agreement with Whitestown and Browning.
Prologis.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Again, this is Resolution number 2024 dash zero six. It essentially concludes an issue that's been going on for about ten years related to the Anson bonds and the tax collections based upon assessed valuation in a certain area. Back in 2014, the county entered into an interlocal agreement with Whitestown to essentially make up payments that were lost because of the fighter, the tax fire rate that went away. And so Duke was unable to, at that point, make sufficient, make sufficient collections for all of the debt service for the outstanding Anson bonds. Over the past ten years, Whitestown has been making those payments. The problem is, is that rate keeps going up and up and up, and has continued to accelerate. So we have entered into an agreement with Whitestown, which is called the tri-party agreement. So it's between Boone County and the town of Whitestown, and then Browning, Prologis, that has stepped in the shoes of Duke. Duke sold out to Browning and Prologis. So the monies that are owed will now be going to Browning and Prologis from the bond proceeds. So with that, this tri-party agreement resolves all these issues, and we go away with the interlocal from ten years ago. And the essence of it is that the two, there's two TIF areas down there. There's what they call Area One and Area Two. Area One has more than enough money for, to make the bond payments, and Area Two is a little bit deficient, so we're essentially merging those two areas. It's, this, the tri-party agreement requires signature and approval from UOL, from the town of Whitestown, and from the Redevelopment Commission, which of course oversees the TIF areas. Happy to answer any questions you have. This has already been approved by Whitestown at their meeting last Monday, I believe it was. Upon the execution of the agreement by the three of you, as well as the Redevelopment Commission, it will be sent to Browning and Prologis, and they'll sign off on it. Brian Colton, the financial advisor, and I, and Heather James with Ice Smaller, Bond Counsel, had an extensive meeting with Bank of New York, Mellon, who's the trustee. So they've got specific instructions on the flow of funds. With that, happy to answer any questions.
I'm just going to say that I'm happy that I don't have to sit during any more of those meetings. This has been going on for a very long time, and the efforts by Bob Clutter and Heather James and Brian Colton on our behalf, along with Tom Langenfelter. It's been a process. Appreciate the cooperation between Whitestown and Prologis, Browning, and Duke. They've been very patient, and they've been very, I'm not sure what the word I'm looking for, agreeable.
Agreeable.
Yeah. And they've had a lot of pressure on them to pay their bills and to pay their stockholders back. So I think it's, it's really good that we've come to this agreement finally. And going forward, here's a definite plan going into the next, what, eight years.
Eight years.
Yeah.
This actually, too, the merger of these two areas will allow the bonds to be paid off a little quicker also.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, now the next one is Resolution 2024 dash seven, disposal of surplus property.
Yes, annually, of course, you allow the IT department to dispose of various pieces of equipment and computers, that type of thing, Sean. I think you sent a list over to...
We're still finishing it up.
Finishing up the last two of it. Okay. Yes, and so this is kind of the, the typical resolution authorizing disposal of surplus property, uh, which includes, also includes, uh, the intellectual property and the website, livinginboonecounty.com, uh, which, that agreement has been terminated or will be terminated at the end of this year. And, uh, all of the IT equipment that may be auctioned, sold, traded in, salvaged, or otherwise disposed of in accordance with state law.
Move to approve.
I, I'll second, but I just have, I have a question about the website. It's, it's our website, is that right?
It is. It's your property.
So, and it's got information on there, for example, like about the Justice Center. So is there an interest in keeping it going at this point, or, you know, just for people to look at, or?
It was made very clear by the county council that it was to not be funded.
So is it, it would require funds to put that one together?
It does.
Okay. Okay.
And they decided not to fund it for next year, and, uh, the, the vendor is... Well, under the resolution, the vendor will then, um, get the ownership rights, the intellectual property rights to any of the content or the website URL.
Any further questions? It has been moved and seconded, correct?
Yes.
We get to talk and not forget about that. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we're moving on to Twenty Twenty-five Appointments.
We can go in order. As Kaylee is making her way up there, there are, uh, two things that, a couple of things that I don't think are on here. One of which is the Lead Owners Association. Uh, when the Lead District was established, they set up an Owners Association at some point in time, uh, that will be turned over to the actual owners. They have, uh, projects within the Lead, but in the short term, it is populated, the Owners Association is populated by three members with three appointments from the Indiana Economic Development Board, the IDC. And the Commissioners have one appointment, and the City of Lebanon has one appointment that is currently Mayor Gentry. Jeff is currently the appointment right now, obviously, uh, you guys can appoint whoever you want. I believe it's Jeff's desire to no longer serve on that position. I don't think you've had any meetings yet, have you?
No.
But there is one meeting today, uh, for the New Lily site over there, the Architectural Review Committee. So going forward, there may be meetings periodically on that, but Jeff is signing his resignation from that particular position. And so, uh, you need to appoint somebody else.
I'll open it up for a motion to appoint.
I will offer to serve on the board if this, if we choose to have one of us do it.
I will make a motion to tim serve.
I thought that motion would be made whether you agreed or not, so. I'll second that motion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right.
Sending you down, then, Tim. A written consent to the resolutions of the Board of Directors and a declarant lead Lebanon Owners Association for your signature.
Have fun.
Then I think the first thing Kaylee has listed on here is, one of the first items is the Area Plan Board. As you are aware, state statute, um, particularly IC thirty-six dash seven four dash two zero eight, requires, uh, that the Plan Commission have a Commissioner on it and also a council member. The statute was revised a couple of years ago. You all have decided to wait until your usual round of appointments at the end of the year to go ahead and repopulate the board so that it is in compliance with state law. And again, that's thirty-six, seven, four, two, oh, eight. So, one of the three of you has to be a member of the Plan Commission. I've talked with, uh, from the council's perspective, they also have to have a member on the Plan Commission. Dustin Plunkett was serving, and I've talked to him. He, he resigned at the last meeting, or it was his last meeting, as the, um, County Extension Appointment, but that is no longer necessary since the surveyor is serving. So I think that now that he's going to be going on to the council, he might be willing to serve. I don't know if... Danny, you still here?
Yeah.
Yep, Kevin's still here. So at your next meeting, you might consider Dustin Plunkett as the county council's, um, appointment to the Plan Commission. But one of the three of you, or, or replace your, um, replacement, Jeff, needs to be on the Plan Commission.
So I'm a, I'm a little bit, just a question, I'm a little bit unclear what this does to the current makeup of the board?
Well, then, the number of members stay the same.
Right.
So currently, you have, the Commissioners have two appointments to the board, so one of those will go away.
And the first Plan Commission meeting is the eighth of January, correct?
Uh, it's the first one, yeah, the second Wednesday, it would be the eighth.
So, so we'll have a Commissioner meeting before that in January? That we, we could potentially vote at that meeting, because I, I, I just got some...
Make sure that's right. I think you do. I know that the first Plan Commission meeting, it's normally the first Monday of the month, but obviously that's January first, so it would be the eighth. And you do have a meeting on the January sixth.
So I guess I'm proposing if we're... I mean, if it's going to shake the makeup of the board, maybe we should wait till January sixth to, to make our appointments, since...
Well, they don't meet, they, they're, the Plan Commission doesn't meet before that anyway.
Right.
Yeah. So the, the eight, uh, you can do it now, you can do it then, it's, nothing changes between now and then, the statute is the statute. So, one of you's going to have to serve.
I think it's better to go ahead and get it done. I'd make a motion to appoint Donnie to the Plan Commission.
Uh, I'll, I'll second that so we can vote on it.
All right, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of appointing me to the APC Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, aye?
Aye, and only nothing out voting against Donnie, I just think we should do it on January sixth.
Understand. Completely understand.
One other thing, and I'm not sure if we updated it yet on the appointment list, uh, but, one of the, one of the three of you always has to serve as a signatory for the trustee of Bank of New York. In the past, that's been Jeff. I just recommend that the president be that signatory now. So signing claims, and it's not just for the jail project, it's all sorts of stuff. The Bank of New York is our trustee on a lot of different bonds.
Yeah, I'll make the, the motion to appoint Donnie to replace me as the signatory on the bonds. You guys can revisit that as you need to.
Yeah, we need to get that done before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, sorry. It's all you, Kaylee.
We did not receive any applications for the Alcohol Beverage Board yet. I have advertised in Lebanon Reporter and Eddie Star three times, but nobody knows someone willing to serve on that board. Send them my way. Our first appointment for discussion is Serta. Mike Rousley said that he was interested in being reappointed, he did not receive any other applicants.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next is Trico Regional Sewer Utility, Sanas Clayways Regional District, Eric Hand would also like to be reappointed, did not receive any other letters of interest.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Stevie B, Wendy McMahon is our current public representation, which is her only serving attorney.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Then next we have a Commissioner representative on that board, it's currently Donnie.
I'll offer to serve on the board if you want to.
I, I would be more than happy to, to turn that over to you if you don't mind.
I'll move to appoint Tim.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And then EMA LEPC Board, current person is Donnie.
I'm looking for Donnie to stay on that board.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
You didn't jump forward fast enough, Howard, so.
Next, we have Pussy Library Board, Julie had submitted a letter of resignation. In places that we received a letter of interest from Edward Canberra. I said that last name correctly, he would be interested in being appointed.
I move to appoint Edward Canberra.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next is Pita Boa, we received interest from Huck and Nicole are being reappointed, did not hear from Bart. And then we received a letter from Matt McDonald as a letter of interest.
So we have three to appoint.
Three, yeah.
I'll make the motion to reappoint the two existing members and Matt McDonald, right?
Yes.
Is the...
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Redevelopment Commission, I have Tom Lingand Filter, Mark Ranson, Judy Hendricks, all of them stated that they would be interested in being reappointed, they did not receive any other letters of interest.
I'll make a motion to reappoint the existing members.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next is Region Five Departmental Fanning, um, that's traditionally been the sheriff appointment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next is Region Five Workforce Board, it's currently Jeff.
I've been doing that one for a long time, and it's, uh, it's a quarterly meeting of elected officials, and then you are invited to each of the monthly meetings, um, for the Workforce Board. Workforce, uh, controls the Work One and Unemployment Application Process. It's a very important board, uh, has about a s- eight and a half million dollar budget for the region.
Do we want to save one for Scott?
We can.
That's, that's up to you.
Yeah. Whatever you're thinking.
Why don't we just table that one till...
He was on.
Till January.
If you wanted to ask him.
Tony's currently on the call, he wants to chime in.
Or we could just table it till January.
Okay. We'll table it then.
Um, next is Solid Waste District Board, um, currently, we have Matt Gentry representing.
We don't know as each.
Yeah, well, I, I would assume we move to approve him.
Yeah.
To stay on us, from what we know now.
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
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 Next is Staff Appointments, capital investments director, Max Menandong.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
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 He's also appointed as the Employee Safety Officer.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Boone County Highway Director.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Human Resources Director, Megan Smith.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Veterans Officer, Max Whitehead.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Emergency Management, Agent McMartin.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
That is a three-vote, yes.
That's all for appointments, but I am on the next side as well.
We'll go right ahead then.
So next is fifty-two Business Additional Cards, American Credit Increase Application. We have received inquiries from a couple of departments requesting to have a card for their office. One of them being the Assessors Office, Highway Department, Prosecutor. Prosecutor's requesting two additional cards for their staff, they currently have one for the task force. They send a lot of their employees to conferences, it also helps pay for the tolls for victims. So, they are asking one for the prosecutor and one for the Chief of Staff for their office. And in doing so, we will need to increase our credit limit on the key bank side for two to five thousand each card. Is there any way to increase the ones for the prosecutor's office? They've had problems going to conferences, and their cards are not, have a limit high enough. I don't want their request to be additional ones, that's what we take care of them, please.
Questions? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next is the Carrot Project List. We had a couple of trouble adjustments.
Before we jump into that, Tim, was there any movement on the Zinesville Project?
There was. So on the Engle Nook Project, the Homeowners Association, um, accepted the, the town's offer with two clarifications, and I didn't... Town Council had a meeting this morning, it was suggested that they, you know, amend their agenda and add that item, whether that happened or not, I'm not sure. And, and actually, one of the items that we approved, the Drainage Board this morning, I spoke with Debbie on Friday, uh, but is a Eel River Cleanout, which would be if the Engle Nook situation, since we don't know, um, the Eel River Cleanout could be, um, used in the regulated legal drain improvements project line, and that would not require any council action, correct?
Correct, because the legal drain improvement project is already approved.
So that would be a, uh, a recommendation we would make if the Engle Nook situation didn't occur for some reason.
What's your comfort level, Tim? You've been working on this?
Um, I, I, I think that it will probably go through. I think it's more likely to go through than not, but I just think there's... I, I think it's going to take another meeting, most likely, uh, uh, not knowing what happened this morning, I think it's probably...
Another town council meeting.
Another town council meeting, probably, just guessing.
You don't think you can, they can be under contract by the end of the year?
Well, we have, all we have to have is our agreement with Zinesville, which we have that in place.
That's what we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
And I don't know what their funding source is for, if they're using our funds or something else.
So we're all good, right? So if you're comfortable, I'm asking you, if you want us to move ahead with that?
Yeah, I think from our end...
Okay.
I think we've got everything in place, we need to have a place.
Okay.
And even a contingency plan in, in case it doesn't happen for some reason.
Appreciate you working through all that. All right.
Um, so on the spreadsheet that you guys have previously voted on, one of the items with IT, you previously approved three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for their project. There were two items that were removed during budget workshops, that was not reflected on my spreadsheet. So I'd recommend reducing that to three hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. In addition to that, I was informed by the Otter's Office that for the advanced waste water generators, we received a reimbursement of forty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents, instead of the forty-five thousand that was reflected in there, so I would recommend making the adjustment to that line to eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. For the LiDAR, we had to discuss it in the meeting, but I did not update one part of my spreadsheet, so that number should be seventy-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents, not seventy-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-five, which is what you approved, but I want to make sure that's updated in the calculations. And then, I would imagine the difference, you want to apply that to road conversion materials unless you want to...
Road conversion?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. And that covers all of my changes.
I'll move to approve the adjusted list.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Next on our list, Bob, did you have anything on that one, on M?
Oh, I would just request to table that.
Move to table.
Why are we tabling?
Is that not something that has to be done?
Yeah.
Because that was ARP funds, wasn't it? Is this different?
It's not ARP funds, is it?
The ISS was approved on ARP's list.
It is. Yes.
Okay. Well, then I'll withdraw my motion.
Was this something different?
I didn't realize that was being paid for out of that, I haven't had a chance to review the SANDI agreement. I don't know if it's, if it fits with what the insurance company has requested. So I haven't seen anything from it yet, I think this is it, you're in the package, isn't it? But I, it was never sent to me, so I haven't had a chance to look at it to see if it's compliant with what the insurance company requested.
So we can make a motion subject to Bob's review, Donnie signing on behalf of the board, you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next, Guts, do you have, you have two in a row here. Professional Services.
The Esri. I'm sorry, which the Esri I know about, what's the?
Wolfert.
Wolfert.
Also has, that, I don't know that Sean actually said, that was Bob and me and Eric that worked with Wolfert on that agreement on the LiDAR, which is part of the ARP fund.
Yeah, this is the new LiDAR imaging for our GIS system, and we've got a professional services agreement, this is with Wolfert.
It's for the additional contours?
It's for the additional contours.
In the bio.
Total is seventy-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents, that's for three inch and one, three inch ortho imagery and one foot contours.
That matches what you got.
Yes.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now you're next.
The Esri agreement is, just some paperwork basically, there's a piece of software that Esri will allow us to utilize to help us automate some of the processes within GIS. There's no additional cost to the county at all, it's just part of the contract, but they have to have that wording in the contract basically, before they'll give us access. Basically, there's no additional charges or anything to, or changes to the contract or whatever.
That's correct, the total, the original contract, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, this is new language in the contracts, so the contract price adjustment is zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go into our public hearing on the vacation of an alley and street in Mechanicsburg.
All right, Jordan. All right, yes, good morning, everyone, we bought a property in Mechanicsburg, eighty-three seventy-two North Burg Avenue, and there is a twelve-foot alley running smack dab through the middle of our detached garage, so I petitioned to have that alley vacated, as well as a sixty-foot alley south of the property that just runs between my neighbor's property and ours.
So you can't make the garage big enough to get in a...
Yeah, things drive through it.
A driveway garage?
We may be able to figure that out, yeah.
So Jordan contacted me about this, Indian Code thirty-six, seven dash thirty dash twelve relates to the vacation of rights of way. Attached as an exhibit are the, is the legal description for both the twelve-foot alley and the sixty-foot platted street, neither have any improvements whatsoever. In fact, there are a couple tool sheds sitting on the big one, and again, Jordan's garage sitting across the alley, no improvements pursuant to the code I cited. I sent certified letters to the surrounding property owners, one of which is Ms. Kurtchel, and the other one is Ms. Short, Pamela Short. They both received those, I got the certified letter, green stamp back with their signatures, and one of them called me, I believe it was Mrs. Short that called me to discuss it. She did not have an objection, a couple should notice at this public hearing in the Lebanon Reporter on November twenty-sixth. Anybody else want to speak on this?
Did you open a public hearing?
I did.
Okay.
Is anybody else present that wants to speak on this vacation petition? You can close the public hearing, and then the next would be the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, stating that we sent certified letters and held a public hearing, there's been no objection, and the findings are, notice public, public hearing was published in accordance with state law, abiding landowners were provided notice. The unapproved alley and street delineated on the attached exhibits hereby vacated, each abiding landowner shall assume the one-half of the property vacated that was platted as the alley and street. The Boone County Commissioners waive any assessment of benefits to the abiding landowners and transfer said property without cost, and then this ordinance would be recorded in the Boone County Recorder's Office.
We need a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, interestingly enough, being the last item on the agenda for my last meeting, I have to abstain because I've been personally involved on my business side with Jordan on this project, so I'll let, let you guys take care of this.
Did you get an appraisal on that one?
I did.
Oh, boy.
So with that, I would recommend a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, ordinance vacating an unapproved alley and street in Mechanicsburg.
To move.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, well, you don't oppose, sorry. All right. Let's take care of the queue also, see what else we got on here. One thing that I want, that I was asked to, to remind everyone before we move on to staff reports, is that the swearing-in of the elected officials is evening at the courthouse. If you're being sworn in or bringing your family members, please be there by six-thirty. I'm not sure exactly what the time that it starts, I would guess around seven, but Debbie wanted me to, to announce that, that we'll start, or requests you to be there by six-thirty so that you can get, get it all organized and ready to go. All right. Area plan and staff reports, nothing there. Max, do you have anything else? Health Department, Doc, do you have anything? Human Resources? IT? And then we'll go to Nick. Save the best for last. Remember, there's one right after you, never mind.
A few items for consideration today, the annual material bids that we opened at the last meeting, at the December second meeting, we put to request acceptance of those bids we received for next year's materials, all method qualifications that were laid out in the notice letters.
I'll move to accept the bids.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next, I have the change order number three for Bridge nineteen, which is the, on ten seventy-five West, that's the north bridge of the two that we just recently reopened. During the final walkthrough, we found an issue with the guardrail, existing guardrail to new guardrail, and some of the pieces that have to be included when we change the type of guardrail out there. So we worked with the contractor to get the best price we could get for replacing that guardrail and making it realigned. The total amount is three thousand nine hundred dollars, so we're requesting execution of that change order.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The next two are community crossings applications, commitment letters, the first one is for Bridge forty-four, which is on four hundred east, north of seven fifty north, south of eight fifty north over Bud Creek. Working on the plans for the rehabilitation for this for probably a year or more, the bid in development, just putting a concrete deck on top of the existing box beams, and getting the guardrail up to the current standards. Total construction estimate is four hundred and eight thousand, oh, four hundred and eight and fifteen, so four oh eight zero one five. And Community Crossings only covers construction dollars, so they would cover fifty percent of construction. This would be the application that gets submitted in January, we've got the plans pretty far down, down the road, and we think we can get this to letting in April. In the catch-up to Community Crossings, we have a short window to get it constructed and closed out. So our team's been working on this project for some time, so the, the master construction would be two hundred and four thousand, seven dollars and fifty cents, and we have included that in our budget for twenty twenty-five to have our construction matching dollars based on this estimate. So requesting execution of the funding commitment letter for Community Crossings.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The other project is a small structure replacement on Pine View Drive, just north of ninety-sixth Street. Pine View Drive is, is a couple of cul-de-sacs, but there's no other access point out of Pine View without using this, this route to ninety-sixth Street. So the small structure is gonna take some additional work to do the replacement, we have to build a, a route around it temporarily to allow access for people to get access to properties, and allow emergency vehicle access during construction. Been working on the plans for this for a while and trying to get utilities to relocate in advance of this project. The total construction estimate is four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and Community Crossings would cover fifty percent of that, so the total would be two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So Community Crossings, it announced just similar to this year, there's one point five million dollar cap, instead of a million dollar cap, so next year will be the same thing, we'll be able to go after one point five million dollars. We've done a mix of resurfacing, pavement preservation projects, and bridges and small structures, so for the first call, we want to go out for these two projects, for, for a two small structure, or bridge and small structure project. So requesting execution of that, the financial commitment letter for EAO zero twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Other items for information, Bridge ninety-one did open a week early, it opened on Friday, has Elizaville Road, here just east of town. And Bridge one hundred is expected to open by Friday, which I put it right on schedule for being closed for three weeks, so those two projects for repairs have gone well. There are also, like an update, I put it on the report, but you mentioned being at a, a meeting and discussing the, the new project out of two hundred West, which we're now being told it's called Project Boundary Alpha Thirty-two, solely within the limits of Lebanon's control as far as planning and zoning is considered. With that, two hundred West, what our understanding is right now is there's the only access to that site, and a substantial amount of construction traffic that would be using that route to get there and build that site. We're concerned about the roads south of that, so what we ran into on the project up north when the Lily Site was being developed is the multiple access points, and running that many vehicles, even I sixty-five and thirty-two, but thirty-two and two hundred West, motorists find another route to get there. And we already have a problem with this road at the south end, it, it takes you into the business park, cold storage. Many phones or apps direct motorists to go that route, or take two hundred West and use Mount Zion Road, which is a gravel road with multiple curves and two very tight ninety-degree curves in semi-traffic. So we have pretty good concerns that there's gonna be an issue at two hundred West, or in Mount Zion Road, there's a bridge that constantly gets the guardrail knocked off and ripped off due to the trucks driving over it. It's not something that's gonna be easily worked around or dealt with, and we've recently had to replace that guardrail again for numerous times since I've been at the Highway Department. But it won't be long till it gets run over again because the, there's no other way out, once a truck gets to that intersection, there is no other way to go any other direction. There's no turnaround, you can't turn, you cannot turn to go the direction, it's physically impossible, there's guardrail on three sides of the intersection and a bridge deck, and it's met at, at an, at an angle that's not even a ninety-degree angle, it's tighter than that, and semis just can't make that turn. So we've mentioned it in project meetings when we've, you know, heard there's gonna be a development at this, at this site, additional access on thirty-two, a road improvement south of the site, we don't have control of that, we don't, we aren't able to put that in any kind of restrictions, but I wanted to bring it to your attention at this stage, if there's gonna be an ongoing conversation with the I E C, with the folks that are doing the development, that we see that as a future problem that could cause, not only traffic backups, but property damage, and bridge, bridge deck and bridge guardrail damage that could cause closure, if that guardrail gets knocked off, we have to close the road. So that'll be an impact to the people that still live out there, it's our understanding there's not a lot of relocation as part of this project, so the residents that are there are going to be dealing with a very large amount of construction traffic that could cause a pretty significant impact. Those are my main items for discussion today, I just want to bring it to your attention at this stage, it's early in the project.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elected officials.
Kevin Danhorn, Boone County Council, I came on board eight years ago as an elected official. And before that time, I've always been well, well-involved in my community. And eight years ago, I decided, you know, I wanna see what I can do in politics. And there were two people that helped me understand what's gonna be ahead for me. One of them being Steve Jacob at that time, was the Boone County Council President, God rest his soul, I picked his brain like a chicken bone, and he helped me understand all of the things that I need to know with respect to Boone County Council work. The other individual in the room was Mr. Jeff Wolf, I'd go to Jeff and I'd ask him, boom, I'd get answers from him. I want to thank you publicly for your service, this county will miss you, you have saved these constituents, that you have served well. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not several million dollars over the time that you've been here on the board, so I just want to publicly thank you. And we're, we're all gonna miss you, in addition to you and Steve, there have been many others, some of you right here in the room, who have helped me understand what it means to be, quote, a politician. And I'm one of the guys that shoots straight from the hip, sometimes I hear Bob Clutter telling me, as he told me many years ago, Kevin, sometimes it's better just to keep your mouth closed. And I've done that, per his advice, but again, I just want to say thank you, a big round of applause to Jeff Wolf for the wonderful service that he has provided to this county for the last, how many years?
Almost sixteen.
Sixteen years, so thank you, sir.
Other elected officials? Bob, do you have some information that you'd like to share?
Yes. Kind of following along with what Kevin just said, today we gather to celebrate and honor a remarkable individual who served this community with unwavering dedication, integrity, and an unparalleled commitment to public service. As we bid farewell to County Commissioner Jeff Wolf, we do so with mixed emotions, gratitude for the incredible legacy he is leaving behind, and a touch of sadness at the thought... and a touch of sadness at the thought of no longer having his leadership to guide us forward. Jeff Wolf has spent twenty-seven years as a dedicated public servant, leading with purpose and a deep passion for making our county a better place for all its residents. He entered office with a vision, one that was not just about policy and procedures, but about real lasting change for people who call this place home. Throughout his tenure, Jeff worked tirelessly to tackle some of the most pressing issues facing our county, whether it was improving infrastructure, advocating for sustainable development, ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents, or fostering economic growth. He understood that each decision, each vote, had an impact on the lives of the people he represented, and he never took that responsibility lightly. As we reflect on his achievements, it's clear that Jeff leaves behind a legacy of progress, one that will continue to shape our community for years to come. But even more importantly, he is leaving behind an example of what it means to lead with integrity, humility, and a genuine love for the people he serves. Jeff, we thank you for your dedication, your hard work, and your commitment to making this community a better place. We wish you nothing but the best in the next chapter of your life, and we know that whatever you choose to do, you will continue to inspire others just as you have inspired us. Congratulations on your retirement, and may the future bring you health, happiness, and new adventures.
Comments?
Well, I've only been here for two of those years, and they've flown by, for sure. Certainly didn't seem like two years, just, I'm sure it didn't feel like, however, it's been you, you've been here. But, you know, we don't, we don't always agree on everything, but we've agreed on most things. So I just appreciate your service, 'cause I, that's why I got in, 'cause I wanted to serve, so.
All right, I think a couple of comments that Kevin said earlier about being a team effort, and that's, that's what it is. Twelve years ago when I became commissioner, I didn't know what I was doing. I still don't know why I'm doing, I mean, what I'm doing. Anyway, but no, but because of Jeff and Mark at the time, and that team effort of helping me become a better commissioner, he's the reason why. He's the one that, that talked me into running. I'm still gonna hold that against you. But no, it, like I said, it's a team effort of everyone working together. Just like you said, sometimes we don't agree on things. But you know what? Life moves on, and you respect other people's opinions. And then Jeff has always been that way, so, thank you.
I don't have much to say other than thank you, people of Boone County.
You're welcome.
Always a team effort. All right, moving on to claims.
We've got a few things to ratify, some claims at the jail project. Eighty-five hundred, eight thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Paint existing window frames, storm line tie-in, sixteen thousand one sixty-five. More painting of frames, one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Electrical insecurity changes, eighty-four thousand seventy-eight dollars. One painting update scheduled at no cost. And material testing allowance overage, twenty-nine thousand and two dollars. Asked for your ratification of those.
Move to round, aye.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And then we've got the usual batch of claims, including payroll.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And mail, I don't think we've got much of anything. IDAM notification. Huntington Bank notification. Couple more IDAM notifications, that's it, gentlemen.
All right, one more motion, gentlemen.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for being here. Merry Christmas.